Good morning. It's 10:38, and I'll call this meeting to order. Chief of Staff Karen Nicola-Jeussi, will you please take a roll?
Chair Brooks.
Here.
Vice Chair Eris Scotta.
Here.
Regent Boylan.
Here.
Regent Brager.
Here.
Regent Brown. Regent Carvalho.
Here.
Regent Cruz Crawford.
Present.
Regent Del Carlo.
I'm here.
Regent Downs.
Here.
Regent Goodman.
Here.
Regent McMichael.
Here.
Regent Perkins. Regent Tarkanian.
Here.
You have a quorum present.
Thank you. You know, normally a regent or one of our guests will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd like to ask the Senate Faculty Chair of UNLV to please honor us and lead us in the pledge. Okay, thank you. We appreciate that. What I'd like is, I'll ask everyone to please join me in a moment of silence to honor the victim of Wednesday's tragedy at UNLV, and to take a few moments to reflect upon their contributions to the university. Thank you. To our students, faculty, and staff, and the greater UNLV community, who've been so deeply affected by the senseless act of violence that occurred on the campus, please know that we're here to support you, we stand with you, and we are rebel strong and UNLV strong. What I'd like to do is something that's a little bit different than what you might normally see in one of our meetings, but given the circumstances, I think a little bit different is going to be okay today. And what I'd like to do is offer President Whitfield the opportunity to make some remarks.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Board, guests in the audience. For the record, Keith Whitfield, President of UNLV. Just trying to think about what I could say, trying to think about what we haven't already said, trying to think about the things that are in people's hearts. I am keenly aware that there's a lot of folks that are hurting still. There's a lot of people that have been influenced and impacted by, I don't even know what to call it anymore. If you call it a horrific event, that just doesn't seem enough. There's not a term to be able to put that actually accurately represents the event that happened on our campus. I will just say that I am, in general, a pretty positive person. This has rocked me to the core. I heard for every single one of our folks at UNLV, but I am particularly been uplifted by the support that we have gotten from ENSI, from the Board, from our community members, particularly from our Chancellor, from virtually everyone. And actually, it's not even just been something in the city of Las Vegas. I'd like to give a shout out, I know, to TMCC, to the University of Nevada Reno, in particular where there are students and there are faculty, and there may be others, and if I've missed some, I apologize. But they're members of our system. Our system that sometimes we forget is a system, a system that is connected in many different ways. And what's interesting is, is that when crises hit, we really show the strength of the system, and we come together, and we try to work together, and we support one another. And for that, I'm very, very appreciative. I will say that there is no playbook for this. We have been reaching out to different faculty, different schools, different deans, lots of folks internally, thinking about how we go forward. And I guess where my positive piece comes in is that we will recover. This will forever be a piece of our history, but we will recover. I hope that you get an opportunity tomorrow to come with one of the memorials that we're holding at the university tomorrow at 2:00 PM over by the searchlight. And we're offering that in part to make sure that people get an opportunity to celebrate the lives of these incredible faculty that we lost. Also, just an opportunity to do some grieving, because I know for lots of folks, they haven't figured out or haven't had a source, an avenue from which to be able to grieve. This is just one of them. We know that there will be more, and we really do appreciate the support that we've seen from the community, from the hospitality industry, from our political supporters, both federal and state. It's been something that has been helping us move forward. So... It is interesting. I'm usually got too many words for you. I don't have enough words for you today. I don't think I have enough to be able to say how much. I want to say to our folks that we really do thank you for your help and knowing that the leadership at UNLV is committed to working very, very hard to try to recover, and we need the support of everyone. We definitely need the support of everyone on our campus, but we need your support, too. So all that you've offered, we thank you, and we hope that we can continue to get that from you. I really want to put out again that if there are folks who are listening to this that are having some of their own struggles with this, I have seen it, I have tried to comfort some folks, I worry about the folks that I don't get to see. I worry about the folks that we haven't actually been able to make sure that they get the help and support that they need. So we'll continue to be sending out those messages. But if there's anything that you all can think of that you need to suggest to us, encourage us, we're always open and thankful to hear it. With that, Chair, those are my words. Thank you.
Thank you, President Whitfield. We certainly appreciate your words, and please know as we have maintained that we're here to support you, and whatever type of resources the Board or System Office can offer you, please let us know. And again, thank you for your words. There were, it's because of the nature of this tragic crisis and event and senseless violence, there are some folks that I think should be recognized for their swift action. And if you give me just a second, in a moment, I'll ask Director Garcia to come up, but first I'd like to read the Certificate of Appreciation. It says, "In grateful appreciation for your exemplary leadership, commitment to the safety of those on the UNLV campus and our community during a crisis, the Board of Regents of the Nevada System of Higher Education would like to extend the highest appreciation to Adam Garcia in recognition of your continued bravery, integrity, and dedication to the safety and well-being of all ENSI institutions in Southern Nevada." Director Garcia, would you kindly come up and please accept this from us? I think we all recognize and know that Director Garcia does not work alone, that he's got a fantastic team, and it was the swift action of his team members that, I believe, prevented more tragedies from occurring on that campus. And so we find it extremely important to be able to recognize them through a resolution. And I'd like to read the resolution, and then I would appreciate if those from UPD could please come up and accept the resolution that we have. And I'd like everybody to know that with us today are folks from Dispatch who were fielding calls during this active shooter incident. There are support staff with us today, and there are officers with us today. And these folks and this team should absolutely be commended on their response to everything that happened at UNLV and their follow-through with other members of ENSI and students. This says, "A resolution honoring and commending the brave men and women of University Police Services Southern Command for their exemplary courage and heroism. Whereas on December 6, 2023, University Police Services Southern Command responded to report of an active shooter at Frank and Isella Beam Hall on the University of Nevada Las Vegas campus. And whereas University Police Services Southern Command issued the campus-wide alert Run, Hide, Fight to protect and preserve the safety of students, faculty, staff, and visitors in the many buildings across the University of Nevada Las Vegas campus. And whereas Detective Nathaniel Drum and Officer Damian Garcia of University Police Services Southern Command demonstrated remarkable courage and ability and an unwavering devotion to duty when confronted by the gunman as he exited Beam Hall, taking immediate action to eliminate the threat within minutes of the initial report. And whereas University Police Services Southern Command acted swiftly and decisively in the face of harrowing circumstances to protect those whom they so valiantly serve. And whereas University Police Services Southern Command worked through the night systematically clearing every building and ensuring there were no further threats to the campus community. And whereas the selfless and courageous actions of University Police Services Southern Command, Detective Nathaniel Drum, Officer Damian Garcia, and the multiple agencies that joined alongside them undoubtedly prevented the loss of countless additional lives. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Regents of the Nevada System of Higher Education honors and commends the men and women of University Police Services Southern Command for their exemplary courage and heroism in fulfilling their duty to protect and serve and acting with dedication and compassion for the students, faculty, and staff of the University of Nevada Las Vegas and the Nevada System of Higher Education. Be it further resolved that the Board of Regents and the Nevada System of Higher Education mourns the loss of faculty members Dr. Chang, Dr. Navarro Valdez, and Dr. Takimaru, who represented the very best of the University of Nevada Las Vegas and whose legacy of teaching and service will live on through those they inspired. Thank you very much, UPD. We recognize the sacrifice and the diligence of your work and the expediency in which you responded to this event so that we did not have a greater loss of lives on that campus. Thank you again." Now, normally, we would move right into public comment, but after these presentations, I think it would be great to allow some time for congratulatory remarks to the officers of UPD. So we'll take a five-minute administrative recess. Thank you. Well, I hope we've provided some time to congratulate UPD, but perhaps it's also a good idea if we get back to our agenda. Okay, and we will move on to item agenda number one, which is public comment. For those who would like to call in and offer public comment, please dial 669-444-9171 and enter meeting ID 928-4944-5069 and pass code 555-555. Is there any public comments at GBC?
There is no public comment at GBC at this time.
Thank you. Is there any public comment at the System Office in Reno?
Yes, sir, as. Good morning. Jim New, N-E-W Nevada Faculty Alliance. It has not been a full week since our world was rocked by the horrific shootings on the UNLV campus. Sadly, the story didn't even last 24 hours in the American news cycle, but the scars caused by the loss of the three faculty members and serious injury to another, as well as terrorizing an entire university campus, will last forever. There are no words that convey the bewilderment and sorrow that I'm sure everyone here feels for our colleagues, our friends, our students, and all their families who are suffering. This event unfortunately has brought into sharp focus just how vulnerable our campuses really are. I would suggest to this board to consider immediately commissioning a study of campus safety and request an emergency supplemental budget appropriation to enhance security at all ENSI institutions. Respect and compassion must guide our interactions with one another, especially in our institutions of higher learning. We in the NFA appreciate your work on our behalf, and we stand ready to work with this board and campus administrators to help our UNLV family recover and build safer communities for us all. Thank you.
Kent Irvin, ERVIN Nevada Faculty Alliance. After the events at UNLV, it's hard to focus on regular policy discussions. Our colleagues and students are in pain, dealing with trauma, sadness, anger, fear. We sympathize with and share in those feelings. We mourn for our three colleagues who were senselessly murdered, and our thoughts are with the fourth victim who was in the hospital. We can only imagine what their families, friends, colleagues, and students are going through. Words are insufficient. On behalf of the Nevada Faculty Alliance, I would like to thank the University Police for their heroic and professional response. We thank President Keith Whitfield, Chancellor Charlton, Regents, and so many others at UNLV and ENSI and the community for their caring actions. We thank President Joe Biden for meeting personally with UNLV representatives and for including Doug Unger to represent the faculty for the NFA. Finally, we call on ENSI and the Board of Regents to seek emergency state funding to repair the damage at UNLV and to improve safety on all campuses. Faculty, staff, and students should be fully involved in discussions of the safety improvements needed to keep us safer while maintaining positive learning and working environments. The NFA is always ready to work together with ENSI and all of you to advance our mission to empower faculty to be fully engaged in helping students succeed. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Peter Reed, R-E-E-D. I serve as Chair of the ENSI Council of Senate Chairs, and I'll be reading the first portion of a joint statement prepared by your Senate Chairs. We requested time on the agenda today to share our full statement, but given the timing of the agenda release, along with other priorities, we were unable to do so, and thus, we will read this full statement collaboratively in sections. We'll also prepare a written record of this statement to share with Regents, Presidents, and faculty across the system. Over the past week since the tragedy on UNLV's campus in which three faculty members in the Lee Business School and College of Liberal Arts lost their lives, and another was seriously wounded, faculty, staff, and students across the system have experienced feelings of disbelief, fear, and anger. It's important to first acknowledge that we're all very grateful for the fast and effective response of the University Police Services Southern Command and that of greater Las Vegas law enforcement and first responders. Their immediate action helped avoid additional carnage and offered reassurance to a campus in immediate peril, to law enforcement and the first responders who run toward a crisis, and help keep our campuses safe. Thank you. The Council of Senate Chairs came together as a group recently to offer support and reflect on ways to prevent or mitigate the impact of similar events in the future. We've all felt a wide range of emotions and ask our leaders to listen to faculty experiences regarding safety on our campuses. On most of our campuses, there is no way to lock or secure classroom doors from the inside. Over the last couple of years, security locks were installed in classrooms at the University of Nevada Reno, providing faculty a way to quickly lock down their classroom in the event of a crisis. We believe such locks should be installed universally across ENSI. Alternatively, ensuring classrooms have heavy doors with dead bolts that can be locked from the inside may be an option. Further, at CSN, there are panic buttons in the classrooms that immediately secure classrooms and notify emergency personnel, and we feel these should be installed across the system as well. Another important area of focus is ensuring accessible safety training. We know that University Police and Campus Safety Offices currently offer trainings, such as active assailant training periodically and upon request by departments and units. However, we feel these should be ubiquitous with a significant increase in the reach and frequency to ensure that as many faculty, staff, and students as possible receive training, perhaps during all staff development days, not during teaching times. It may also be time to make these mandatory for all employees, if not for all students. We understand that implementing these ideas will require significant funding, and we hope our leaders will find the resources needed to make these critical investments in our safety and well-being. This joint statement by the Council of Senate Chairs will now be continued by my colleague.
Seeing no other public comment at the System Office in Reno, we'll now move to Las Vegas.
Patrick Villa, V-I-L-L-A, Faculty Senate Chair at CSN. I will continue the statement from the Faculty Senate Chairs. During any campus incidents, frequent clear communication is a vital way to not only inform but also protect our campus communities. The recent incident revealed some potential challenges in this regard, including difficulty connecting quickly with all campus leaders across the system, as well as limited details and guidance in the updates provided. It is critical to share all available information in a timely manner and to be sure the Senate Chairs are in the emergency communication trees, receiving real-time updates. Looping us into these systems will not only support our engagement in potential decisions, honoring shared governance, but will also enable us to respond accurately to faculty questions. Faculty reach out to the Senate Chairs and Senators when there are crises, and we want to be able to respond with timely, accurate information, helping contribute to wide-reaching dissemination of essential guidance. To accomplish this, we need to be engaged. Another important communication strategy that needs to be reassessed is the technology currently in use. We know there are campus-specific safety apps, but the updates are available within them are inconsistent and in some cases nonexistent. It would be helpful to develop a single consolidated ENSI safety app with the staffing available to support system-wide updates along with campus-specific content. Another need is to reassess campus layouts to determine potential opportunities to reduce the presence of unauthorized visitors or suspicious activities. This might include consideration of the number of visibility of access points, as well as additional campus monitoring and surveillance, including having more cameras in key locations. Another consideration is ensuring there are clear points of egress from campus and key campus locations with a widely publicized evacuation plan. Thank you. I'll turn it over to Molly.
Molly Apple, Faculty Senate Chair at Nevada State University. There's no question that our colleagues and community at UNLV are bearing the heaviest weight of this. The rest of us in ENSI are feeling a pain of watching a beloved family member go through a horrific ordeal that reverberates. Among the rest of ENSI, while each institution has its own particularities, most of the items we've named today are shared experiences by academic and administrative faculty across the system. We also share a need for our leaders to spend time listening to ENSI faculty in the wake of the shattering of our very mission as a higher education system, and we're thankful for those of you doing that today. As a system, we must contend with the fact that all of the people who were murdered or wounded this week were faculty of color. They were murdered by a man who, according to reporting, sought employment at multiple Southern Nevada higher education institutions and had been repeatedly denied. It is extremely common, even necessary for faculty, especially part-time instructors, to work at UNLV and CSN and Nevada State. Faculty serving on search committees find themselves asking if they're safe when they prevent the next unhinged person from being around our colleagues and students. Search committees seeking to recruit and retain diverse academic and administrative faculty for the well-being of higher ed in our state are once again at a loss for how to account for these structural injustices for our candidates. As difficult as it is, we know that the recent tragedy at UNLV must serve as an opportunity for us to reflect, assess, and learn what can be done across our system to better prevent future incidents while continuing to enhance our response and harm mitigation should any future incidents occur. As Senate Chairs, we implore you to engage with us in dialogue and shared governance as we consider what actions can be taken to continually ensure and enhance the future safety of our faculty, staff, and students. Thank you all.
Dr. Bill Robinson, Chair of the UNLV Faculty Senate. I'm probably going to get really seriously emotional here, but please don't worry about me. I'm really good at letting everything out, and then 10 minutes later, I'm fine. Beam Hall is my building, those people are my colleagues and my friends. I am more concerned about everybody who's still with us. I can't deal with the folks who are gone, the little kids who don't have their mom. But we had, we have the marketing department, who are my best buddies outside my department, they were in a meeting, they were locked for four hours in a conference room together, not knowing what was going to happen. And when they got led out of that room, their colleague is still there on the floor. The blood is still there. My colleagues in my department were locked, were, when they exited the building, they followed the blood trail of our colleague who was wounded and managed somehow to extricate himself from that building and get to the police. And they followed his blood trail out. These are not easy things that we recover from. These are not, business as usual begins in January. And the students, and the students have horrific stories. Fortunately, most of our faculty did amazing work of making sure their students were safe, faculty standing by the door to make sure that if that guy came in, it was them. It's just remarkable to me. Anyway, as my colleague said, it's important that we understand that the folks who were shot were all people of color. I have, I pointed that out, I pointed out the need to make sure we understood what was going on. I have heard from faculty of color all over my campus that they feel... I have heard from faculty of color all over my campus that they feel isolated, not part of the campus community. It's become clear to me from the responses that we are not a minority and Hispanic-serving institution, we are a minority and Hispanic-majority institution perhaps, but we're, we have to commit to really taking that word "serving" and helping those, our colleagues to understand what's going on. And I don't, I know, I don't know how to deal with that. There was a horrific email, I don't know if you've all seen it. Many, many, many of our black colleagues on campus received an absolutely horrific, I can't even begin to describe it, email that, again, we need to, we need the FBI. I don't know if they asked President Biden, but they should have asked President Biden to send the FBI to find that person and make sure that in the middle of this crisis you're getting, it's just unconscionable to me what's gone on. I do not know why we're having commencement. Faculty had no involvement in the decision to decide to hold commencement next week, but that seems, it just seems completely tone-deaf to me. There isn't, there's gain from it, but there's also the possibility that we're just gonna, I don't know how we respect what's gone on on our campus and have a commencement celebration a few days later. I just, and the communication has been so poor. No one on my campus believes the communication has even been adequate, much less what it should be. And I'm going to tell you something that I don't like and that you're not going to like, but my president has not responded to any email or text I have sent him since Wednesday. I have not had a conversation with him since Wednesday. I have had more contact from other presidents in the ENCHE than my own president. And I don't know why that is, and I'm, I... Regent Carvalho was at our Senate meeting last Tuesday, and we were talking about the need to enhance safety for students on campus the day before. We have been talking and talking and talking about this for the 24 years I have been on the Senate. When the administration came to us last year and said, "What do you want to be in the legislative budget?", we said, "Door locks, cameras, blue poles." We want security for our campus to be in the legislative budget, and it, that was the only thing we asked for, and we didn't get it. And it is time for the Board to say, "We are going", and not just for us, that when the event happens at UNLV and all those police take off, they took off. And I've heard rumors that there was an incident at DRI, that there were, there was no police presence, there was no police presence, no serious police presence at NSU and at CSN while this was happening at UNLV. This is an ENCHE issue, not a UNLV issue. So, thank you for listening. It is, thoughts and prayers are wonderful, but we're done with them. We are done, and we need to do. Thank you.
Heather Brown, B R O W N. Yes, I am a UNLV alum and a current Regent, but today I'm part of the public. And first, I want to start by thanking President Whitfield for those remarks. I always appreciate when you share your wisdom. I want to thank our faculty chairs for joining us today, and the various members of the ENCHE family. And it can't be said enough that I am very grateful for our police force, for their swift action, and everything they're doing to keep our campuses safe now. And I hope that the students and faculty continue to seek help and heal in your own time. So I'm here for the public portion of the meeting because I do think it's important that the public knows that I'm here to listen. I want our faculty and staff to know that I'm here, but I am not staying for the rest of the agenda. And that's because I don't think it's a time to ask our president and their staff to present to us. There is exactly one item on this agenda that needs to take place before the end of the year, the rest is all just ancillary. And we're supposed to offer direction and support to our institution, and nevertheless, in an email sent to me by our chair, we're carrying on with status quo. I asked on Thursday and Sunday if we could postpone this meeting because this agenda appears tone-deaf to what happened on Wednesday. And I'm glad we made some time at the top of the hour to do those presentations, but that's not enough. And I want to apologize to our faculty and students and our staff for taking away from the much-needed focus that needs to be put on the aftermath of what happened on Wednesday by having this meeting. At the end of the public comment, I'm heading across the street to UNLV to work on an event for the students this afternoon because I really believe that that's where our focus should be, in helping people who we're asking to show back up to campus at some point and not have this meeting. Thank you.
Doug Unger, D O U G, U N G E R, President, UNLV Chapter, Nevada Faculty Alliance. Over the two and a half centuries of the American experience founded on ideologies of individual liberty and freedom, I feel we have somehow sacrificed humane values to the cult of the individual. And so we became a society self-concerned to the exclusion of what we should hold most dear: work sharing, helping hands to one another, the education, and even the lives of our children. When did it become socially normative on the excuse of freedom to address individual grievance with guns? Or to embrace the American fetish of the gun instead of reviling those who wave them around and brag about them like perverse male jewelry? Our humanity feels imprisoned by a cult of guns. After the mass shooting on UNLV campus on December 6th, our faculty, staff, and students no longer feel safe. We grieve the murders of three beloved teachers, all minority professors resonant with our diverse campus: Dr. Patricia Navarro-Vélez, Dr. Chanjan Jerry Chang, and Dr. Naoko Takimaru, also our visiting professor wounded and still fighting for his life. It feels inconceivable to return to a campus with bloodstained halls, bashed-in doors, broken glass, and triggering memories, but we know we must. We ask emergency assessments of campus security for all our campuses, not for optimal safety, that all safety plans must include faculty, staff, and student input before they are approved. We ask the Governor and Legislature for an expedited appropriation of several millions these safety improvements will cost above what insurance pays. We ask our fellow citizens to join us in anger, no rage enough, so that we never stop fighting this prison of gun violence, never, until each woman and man is free, until we are held altogether in the custody of our humanity.
SCS, is there any public comment on the phone?
There are no online callers at this time.
Thank you. I'm going to take just a moment of chair privilege, and I know that we're doing things a little bit differently today than we normally do. While there was some thoughts by a few folks who thought perhaps we shouldn't have a meeting Other members of this Board, the Vice Chair of the Board, and President Whitfield felt that we should move forward, and that part of the things that we are doing today, for some, is part of the healing process, to be able to move forward. And that's why we are here in our seats, and that message regarding the Chairs and the conversation I had with President Whitfield, that was the email that was sent to all Regents. What I'd like to do now is move on to Agenda Item Number Two, and I will call on our Interim Chancellor, Patty Charlton.
Good morning. For the record, Patty Charlton, Interim Chancellor, System of Higher Education. So today, we have a follow-up to our prior Board meeting in which the cost-of-living adjustment for FY '25 was approved for the employees at large. This specific item is coming forward to you separately, and it pertains to the cost-of-living adjustment for clinical faculty at UNR and the UNLV Schools of Medicine, and this is specific to the clinical faculty only. This is similar to the action that was taken in, at the July 21st Special Board Meeting following the June 30th determination on cost-of-living for employees. And so today, before you, I have, I know that the Deans of the Medical School are here with us, as well as UNLV President Sandoval and Keith Whitfield regarding the adjustment of the cost-of-living, which would be an amount for the clinical faculty component specifically not to exceed 4% effective on October 1st, 2024, similar, which is the delay as it pertains to implementation. So with that, we have people that are here, if you have any questions, and be happy to entertain the motion.
Thank you, Interim Chancellor. Is there, are there any Regents with questions regarding the cost-of-living adjustment?
Regent Downs has a question.
Great, there you go.
Trying to get my text to Carrie, but I just didn't get it in time, sorry about that. So I have asked the question why it's 4% and not 11%.
Certainly. I also know that Chris Vitone, Vice Chancellor for Business and Finance and Chief Financial Officer, is up in Reno. We also have the Deans of the Medical School. Perhaps Dean Khan can also provide clarity regarding why there is a difference. And again, this is a difference related to the types of contracts of our clinical faculty. Dean Khan.
Thank you. For the record, Mark Khan, Dean of the Kirk Recordian School of Medicine and Vice President for Health Affairs at UNLV. Thank you for the question, Regent. Our clinical faculty salaries are made up of state funds and earned income from working in our practice plan. Roughly 30% of clinical faculty income comes from the state. So what we're doing is basically taking 30% of what was 12%, as we did last year, 11%, and saying, "We'll make it 4%." The earned income, again, does not come from the state, so comes from a different source. So we believe, both myself and my colleague at University of Nevada Reno, and our respective Presidents, that these should be handled separately. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification.
Regent Carvalho? Are there any other Regents with questions regarding this Agenda Item?
Something to say real quick.
Regent Goodman?
Regent Goodman, for the record. I just want to add to the record that I understand us pulling out the medical schools, and I do think that moving forward, we really need to consider DRI as an institution that has a different structure as well. And, you know, this is, this is workable for them, and perhaps we should have, hindsight, of course, but perhaps we should have considered this as well. Thank you.
Chair Brooks, if I could, just for clarification for the record. So Regent Goodman, through Chair Brooks to you. Just so you know, this is not pertaining to all employees at the Medical School, only specifically, as Dean Khan mentioned, those with the clinical faculty and that extra compensation. So just wanted to make that point for the record.
Vice Chair Ariscotta?
Thank you, Chair Brooks. Out of curiosity, do either one of the med school Deans have a timeframe when the last cola was appropriated to either one of them? And the percentage?
Mark Khan, Dean of Kirk Recordian School of Medicine. Thank you, Regent. Last year, we, both medical schools gave a 4% cost-of-living to their clinical faculty. We're asking for the same this year. I should also mention that annually, the Schools of Medicine, I'll let my colleague at Reno speak for him, but annually at UNLV, we look at market circumstances, and we correct faculty and make equity adjustments. So we've really not fallen behind inflation. Thank you.
For the record, Paul Hoppman, Dean at UNR Med, and I'll just back what Dean Khan has said. Majority of our faculty or joint faculty who are paid through Renown Health, a lot of their salaries are determined by MGMA and AMC metrics, and physicians also have an opportunity to garner an incentive based on their clinical activities.
Regent McMichael?
Yes, I call motion to approve.
Second the motion, Ariscotta.
Thank you. So we have a motion to approve the 2025 cost-of-living adjustments for clinical faculty at UNR and UNLV Schools of Medicine. This motion was seconded by Vice Chair Ariscotta. Is there any discussion? Because we're separated a little bit, and we have technology, I think what we'll do is a roll-call vote on this one, just to make sure. Chief of Staff Nick Laduski, will you please conduct the roll-call?
Regent Perkins. Vice Chair Ariscotta.
Yes.
Regent Boylan.
Aye.
Regent Brager.
Yes.
Chair Brooks.
Yes.
Regent Brown. Regent Carvalho.
Aye.
Regent Cruz Crawford.
Aye.
Regent Del Carlo.
Aye.
Regent Downs.
Aye.
Regent Goodman.
Yes.
Regent McMichael.
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. We'll now move on to Agenda Item Number Three. This is a code revision for joint faculty appointments for Schools of Medicine, and I will call on President Sandoval to lead this conversation.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the Board of Regents. For the record, President Brian Sandoval for the University of Nevada Reno. As you recall, in June 2021, the Board of Regents approved an affiliation agreement between UNR Med and Renown Health, a 50-year commitment with the goal to enhance shared missions in medical education, clinical research, and clinical service in pursuit of a common vision, a healthy Nevada. The agreement integrated clinical services, teaching, and clinical research operations across UNR Med and Renown Health. Per the affiliation, there will be both UNR Med-employed and Renown-employed faculty designated joint faculty who will contribute to our teaching and research missions. The expansion of teaching faculty is of tremendous benefit to the UNR Med, medical student, PA student, and graduate medical education programs. There is specific language within the affiliation agreement that addresses this issue. So to create a unified academic identity among medical educators, the affiliation agreement included a specific directive for UNR Med and Renown to establish a unified title series in the ENCHE handbook for academic titles conferred upon all non-tenure-track clinician faculty regardless of their employer. Our specific request is to add language to the code section 5.4.11 that permits a unified title series and faculty tracks. Our proposed language is broad and allows us to develop and use this title series with an affiliated hospital. The proposed additional language was within the materials that were provided to all of you, so I won't bore you with the specific language because it's there in front of you. So we are not requesting specific titles or tracks because these will need to be developed with our colleagues at Renown and approved by the university president. We discussed this proposal with our colleagues at the UNLV School of Medicine, who do not oppose this addition to the code. So with that, Mr. Chair, thank you for your time and attention, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Regent, Regent McMichael?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Regent.
Second, Ariscotta.
So there's a motion to approve a code revision. This is an approval of revision to the ENCHE code, Title II, Chapter 5, Section 5.1, I'm sorry, Section 5.4.11, authorizing UNR Med to develop a unified academic title series and faculty tracks for non-tenure-track clinician faculty. This motion was seconded for approval by Vice Chair Ariscotta. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I will ask our Chief of Staff, Carrie Laduski, to do a roll-call
Regent Tarkanian. Vice Chair Ariscotta.
Yes.
Regent Boylan.
Aye.
Regent Brager.
Yes.
Chair Brooks.
Yes.
Regent Brown. Regent Carvalho.
Aye.
Regent Cruz Crawford.
Aye.
Regent Cruz Crawford? Regent Cruz Crawford? Regent DelCarlo?
Aye.
Regent Downs?
Aye.
Regent Goodman?
Yes.
Regent McMichael?
Yes.
Regent Perkins? The motion passes.
Thank you. We'll now move on to Agenda Item Number Four. This is a handbook revision regarding paid family leave, and I will call on either General Counsel Parker or Sheri Olson from Human Resources.
Chair Brooks, for the record, Patty Charlton, interim Chancellor. Just for the, I hear that Carrie Parker stepped up to the plate. So just wanted to say that this item before you is some continuation of some of our implementation of items that were passed during the legislature. And if I could just turn it to Deputy General Counsel Carrie Parker, please.
Thank you, interim Chancellor. Good morning, Chair Brooks, members of the board. My name is Carrie Parker, Deputy General Counsel for System Administration, and I have with me
Sheri Olson, Director of Human Resources here at System Administration.
As Chancellor mentioned, we're here to discuss a policy proposal to align with recent legislation that was adopted in the 2023 session. That bill was called AB 376, and it becomes effective January 1st. Your briefing paper outlines the background to this policy proposal, as well as the language in the proposal itself. We'll provide you with a summary of the highlights and are here to answer your questions. During the 2023 Nevada Legislative Session, the legislature passed AB 376, which provides that certain state employees are entitled to take up to eight weeks of paid family leave over the course of a 12-month period for the following reasons. One, bond with a newborn child of the employee or a newborn child of the domestic partner of the employee. Two, bond with a newly adopted child of the employee. Three, recover from or undergo treatment for serious illness. Four, care for a seriously ill member of the immediate family of the employee. Or five, participate in a qualifying event resulting from the military deployment to a foreign country of an immediate family member of the employee. Many of the circumstances under which AB 376 is intended to provide paid family leave are currently covered under the Federal Family Medical Leave Act or the FMLA. Under the FMLA, employees who have been employed for 12 months and have worked at least 1,250 hours, which is approximately 60% of full-time work, are eligible to take 12 weeks of FMLA leave. The FMLA does not require that the leave be paid. NCHI policy currently requires employees to exhaust all paid leave during that 12 weeks of FMLA leave. If employees run out of paid leave during that time, they may go on leave without pay. AB 376 allows individuals, covered in some cases not covered by FMLA, to take up to eight weeks of paid family leave at 50% pay instead of the leave without pay. Under AB 376, the employees may not use paid family leave until their sick leave balance is down to 40 hours. They are allowed to hold those 40 hours of paid sick leave while taking the paid family leave at half pay, 50%. The state has not yet proposed or adopted regulations to interpret and implement AB 376 for other state employees, including NCHI's classified employees. NCHI's classified employees will be governed by the regulations or policies that the state adopts. The intent behind this policy proposal before you is to align with what we anticipate will be offered to NCHI's classified employees according to our interpretation of the bill, which again goes into effect January 1st. Once state regulations are adopted, we will analyze them to determine if we need to come back to the board to recommend any changes. This proposal before you today is for professional employees on A or B contracts. Those are academic and administrative faculty. And if adopted, will be located in the Handbook Section Related to Sick Leave for professional employees, which are provided with the boarding, the board briefing packet. So that would be Title IV, Chapter III, Section 19. This proposal for the board's consideration would not unnecessarily change board policy already in effect related to FMLA leave. The proposal addresses two categories. First, situations that already qualify for FMLA leave and would qualify for paid family leave. And two, situations that do not qualify for FMLA leave but would qualify for paid family leave. We do have a cleanup matter referenced in proposed policy Page 4, subsection 2, where it references Paragraph 8. That's a typo that should be changed to Paragraph 9, which is extended salary sick leave for the staff member's own illness. So we're prepared to go through this, each section by section, or we could stand ready for questions, however you would like to proceed, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much for that presentation. I'll open it up to the board for any questions or comments regarding this agenda item. Any members of the board that have a question or comment? I know that there's sometimes a delay with technology, so I will just see if, Regent McMichael?
Yes, motion to approve.
Regent McMichael, I don't know if you saw, but as you were making this motion to approve, Councilwoman Martinez was leaning into my ear to give me one second, and then we'll move forward. Thank you. Regent McMichael, I know that you're familiar with the back and forth sometimes of these motions, as we did this already at the last quarterly meeting. If you could please restate the motion and also include acceptance of the typo that was referenced in the presentation by Sheri Olson, that I believe would suffice Legals' need to complete this motion.
Yes, motion to approve with those stipulations.
Thank you, Regent McMichael. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. And that was seconded by who?
Vice Chair Ariscotta, but with a question, follow it.
Sure, give me one moment, and then we'll move to discussion. I believe this motion was a motion for approval by Regent McMichael and then seconded by Regent Boylan. I'll now open it up for discussion. Vice Chair Ariscotta?
Thank you, Chair Brooks. Question, when all paid, when all FMLA leave, sick leave, everything is purely exhausted, one of the items I haven't seen is donation leave. Is that something that's still available? And if the donor leave is provided by a faculty member that has an exorbitant amount of hours, is there a limitation of how many hours can be donated to the request of FMLA by that specific employee?
Thank you, Regent Ariscotta. In response to your question, for professional employees, we do not have a catastrophic leave pool. We do for classified employees. The Nevada Administrative Code has provisions that allows for that. Our policy for, that oversees the professional, academic, and administrative faculty does not. So unfortunately, no, there is not a pool of leave that can be donated to an individual who is falling into a leave without pay status.
Not to put you on the spot, but I'm putting you on the spot. Why the difference between the two? Why the discrepancy?
I'm not sure that I can answer that. I can certainly research it for you. I can tell you that there is a separate provision that faculty have access to that classified do not. And that is under Section, what will become Section 9, that is the extended salary sick leave. That allows for the employee to be in a full coverage or salary coverage for a period of time that is based on their years of service. So there are other provisions that could be taken advantage of. There's opportunity for a petition on behalf of the employee that would allow them to maintain that status, or paid status, rather, which would, again, be a benefit to the employee. That is something that classified employees do not have access to. I will certainly look into the catastrophic leave fees for faculty as well.
Please do, thank you. And then one other question. How much leave can be rolled over to the next year? Is it fiscal or calendar? How many hours of leave can be rolled over to the next?
Trying to calculate in my mind, I'm sorry. It's 96 days of sick leave, which equates to 300, it's more than nine, I'm sorry. It's 96 days times eight hours, so I don't have that number in my head.
How much? 240? Excellent.
Yeah.
And that can be rolled over, and any amount of those hours can be donated if or when?
At this, thank you for your question. At this time, no. Once, as the fiscal year comes to an end and we overnight roll into the new fiscal year, any hours above are swept away and they are forfeited to the employee. So the policy allows for 96 days to move forward at this time.
So use or lose, pretty much?
Correct. Well, sick leave, you know, there obviously has to be sick purposes behind that. And so, you know, we have to be mindful of how that is being used, but ultimately, yes, it does become a use it or lose it situation.
Good reason to donate. Thank you.
Councilwoman Parker, would you please, just for the record, I know that we vaguely spoke about the typo, but while we're in this discussion for approval of the motion, can you please restate that?
Certainly. Deputy General Counsel Carrie Parker, for the record, in the board packet, the policy proposal, it would be Paragraph 2 that needs to be revised. There's a revision there changing Paragraph 7 to 8. It should actually change Paragraph 7 to 9.
Thank you. Regent Downs?
Thank you, Chair Brooks. I apologize for not bringing this forward a moment ago. This came up pursuant to NRS, Chapter 2, 81A. I hereby disclose that I am an employee of Nevada System Education, and was from Nevada College. Because of the independence of judgment of a reasonable person would not be materially affected by my situation, I will vote on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Regent Downs. Is there any other discussion on this agenda item? I will ask Carrie, Chief of Staff Nick Laduski, to please take a roll call vote. Obviously, if you're in favor of this, please signify by saying aye or yes during the roll call vote. Thank you.
Vice Chair Ariscotta?
Yes.
Regent Boylan?
Aye.
Regent Brager?
Yes.
Chair Brooks?
Yes.
Regent Brown? Regent Carvallo?
Aye.
Regent Cruz Crawford? Regent DelCarlo?
Aye.
Regent Downs?
Aye.
Regent Goodman?
Yes.
Regent McMichael?
Yes.
Regent Perkins? Regent Perkins? Regent Tarkanian?
Aye.
Thank you, Regent Perkins. Regent Tarkanian? The motion passes.
Thank you. We are going to take a quick five-minute administrative break. Thank you. Okay. Thank you for your patience. There were a couple of just administrative things that we took care of real quick. One of them is to let folks know that there are box lunches in the break room here. Feel free to grab something if you would like, but we're just going to keep moving on. And we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Five. These are the Procedure and Guideline Manual Revisions. And I will call on President Woodfield to start this conversation off.
Thank you, Chair Brooks. Board, colleagues, for the record, Keith Woodfield, President of UNLV. During the Legislative Council Bureau Audit Report, UNLV identified an opportunity to improve both accuracy and transparency in the distribution of the law school registration fees. What that audited report showed was that activities and program funds were being used and being allocated, they were allocating more funds than what was necessary. The excess funds were then being used to supplement the financial aid fund. To both take proactive action and be more transparent in the future reporting, we are requesting to revise the fee distribution to reduce the allocation to activities and programs and increase the allocation to financial aid. This revision will equate the amount that was supplemented from the activities and program fund for the financial aid fund. Once approved, this will be retroactive to July 1st of 2023 and will increase funds allocated to financial aid support for both full and part-time law students. With this in mind, I respectfully offer this for your consideration. And Dean Chan Grinwald is actually here as well to be able to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, President Woodfield. Are there any questions for President Woodfield regarding Agenda Item Number Five? Regent Carvallo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just do have one question for either President Woodfield or Dean Griswold. For part-time versus full-time, it shows per credit. So what's the threshold to go from part-time to full-time in terms of number of credits?
Dean Leah Greenwald, for the record, thank you for that question, Regent. Anything below 11 credits is part-time.
Thank you. I was, I was going to try to do the math, but it gave me a headache. So I appreciate that, that. Thank you. And it does say in our briefing papers that this is a, that the, this is a net impact of zero to students. So it's just, it's essentially shifting this from, I guess, general fund to, to student, student financial aid. Is that correct? Leah Greenwald, for the record. Yes, Regent, that is correct. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Dean. Regent McMichael?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I will second.
So there's a motion to approve the Procedure and Guidelines Manual Revision of the 2325 Tuition and Fees for William Boyd School of Law. The motion for approval was made by Regent McMichael, seconded by Regent Carvallo. Is there any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, I will ask Chief of Staff Nick Laduski to do a roll call vote.
Regent Boylan?
Aye.
Regent Brager?
Yes.
Chair Brooks?
Yes.
Regent Brown? Regent Carvallo?
Aye.
Regent Cruz Crawford? Regent DelCarlo?
Aye.
Regent Downs?
Aye.
Regent Goodman?
Yes.
Regent McMichael?
Yes.
Regent Perkins? Regent Tarkanian? Vice Chair Ariscotta?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. We'll now move on to Agenda Item Number Six. This is Procedure and Guideline Manual's Revision again for tuition and fees with the School of Dental Medicine at UNLV. And once again, I will And once again, I will call on President Woodfield.
Thank you, Chair Brooks, and to the rest of the board. For the record, Keith Woodfield, President of UNLV. As we were addressing the Legislative Council Bureau's Audit Report, it came to our attention that there were discrepancies between the 2023 to 25 Procedures and Guidelines Manual Revision for the UNLV School of Dental Medicine, approved at the June 2020 meeting, and the Board Handbook. This discrepancy was an unintentional oversight in the distribution of the dental school's registration fees as it did not comply with the Board's requirement that 15% of the registration fee be allocated to student access scholarships. Due to this, we're requesting approval to amend the Procedures and Guidelines Manual for the School of Dental Medicine to increase the student access funds to the minimum 15%. This change will be retroactive to July 1 of this year. And although it won't change the fees charged to students, it will increase the fee allocation to the dental school's access scholarships. With this in mind, I respectfully offer this for your consideration. And Dean Ma from the Dental School is here to answer any additional questions.
Thank you, President Woodfield. Are there any Regents with questions? Regent Goodman?
Regent Goodman, for the record. I was reading this and I did have a couple of questions. It seems like it's a significant hit, again, 1.3 million. We just did this essentially a 23% COLA increase. And I just, I'm just wondering, why does it have to be retroactive? I didn't know if this is something that could possibly take place for the fiscal 2425 year, rather than being retroactive. Just because of, I mean, everybody's taking a hit. It just seems maybe a little unnecessary to have to go back.
James Ma, interim dean at the School of Dental Medicine. Thank you, Regent Goodman, for the question. The reason for the retroactive is for compliance. We recognize this was oversight from two years ago. And for the reason of being law-abiding citizens and being compliant, we wanted to make it retroactive.
Thank you very much. May I? I guess it's a question for legal. Is there a way? I mean, I would, I just can't imagine. So these are scholarships, essentially, and then you have to do all of the administrative work to get the scholarships out. We're already going to be in January. Is there any way for us to? I don't know if it's suspending the policy or if it's making the policy, you know, active for next year. But I don't know if there's any way around this. It just seems like it's a lot of money, again, on top of a lot of money that we've asked all of the deans to, you know, have to figure out and the presidents. I just didn't know if there's an option here. From a legal standpoint, can we amend our policy or suspend it or something?
Jimmy Martinez, for the record, that is a possibility. However, that would need to be agendized also. It would be inappropriate to do it as part of this agenda item without it being agendized.
If I may, Regent Goodman, for the record. If it's appealing to the board, it might be something we want to consider and maybe go and look back at. Students really, I mean, like I said, these are scholarship fees that are supposed to be implemented in July. And if there's any way for us to just let this hit the ground running for the next fiscal year, I think it would be prudent. And I would just ask the board to possibly consider that if it's feasible.
If I may, James Ma, interim dean again. That would be preferable. What's unique is at the School of Dental Medicine, our tuition is quite high. And so when we look at a 15%, 15% of a very high tuition, as you pointed out, is a significant amount of money. $1.3 million, which is a fairly significant portion of our operating budget. And the timing is difficult for us if we look in lieu of COLA. I think of it very straightforward that the recent COLA, we're asking nine people to do the work of 10. With the upcoming COLA, we're asking for eight people to do the work of 10. And with this, if we made this retroactive, we would then be asking seven people to do the work of 10. So the impact on us would be rather deep and profound. So appreciate the thought to agendize the item and discuss it thoroughly. Thank you.
Right after that.
Hi, Chris Hevy, Executive Vice President, Provost of UNLV. And just a quick comment. I've been part of this discussion with the dean and the president. And I might ask the System General Counsel if the agenda, if this item could just have a different implementation date without touching the policy. Because essentially, we are just revising the P and G manual and we could have an effective date of fall 2024, which would then relieve the burden on the School of Dental Medicine. Thank you.
Jimmy Martinez, for the record. Since the way it's currently agendized, I think that would be a nonsubstantive change that could be made on the record.
Thank you, Councilman Martinez, and thank you, Dean. We appreciate your frankness in the conversation you're having with us regarding what this looks like from a financial perspective and a financial impact. Regent Goodman?
I need the language.
You just?
I would ask legal counsel for language, please, on how to do the motion.
Yeah, and sorry for jumping in. It looked like there was a lot of crosstalk, so I just want to be transparent in what's happening on the dais. Obviously, Regent Goodman is interested in seeing this come back. We are merely having conversation about what that language looks like in the motion. And so I had deferred to Councilman Martinez to ask what that could look like. And as we were speaking, Regent Goodman was offering some terminology. But if the, if Regent Goodman is interested in bringing this back, what, how could she set the motion to bring the entire item back?
Jimmy Martinez, for the record, this could be a motion to postpone to a date certain. And that would take care of it, and then it would come back on a, it would come back on a specific agenda item or on a specific agenda. Sorry.
Then I would like to make a motion to postpone this item to the January special meeting agenda. Please.
Second.
Thank you, Vice Chair Ariscotta. So Regent Goodman has made a motion to postpone Agenda Item Number Six, which is the Procedures and Guidelines Manual. That has to do with the revision of tuition and fees at the School of Medicine at UNLV. This motion was seconded by Vice Chair Ariscotta. Is there any discussion? Dental school. I'm sorry. Did I not say the dental school? Sorry. So let me restate the motion just for the record. The motion is to postpone Agenda Item Number Six to a January meeting. This agenda item has to do with the Procedures and Guidelines Manual for the revision of the 2325 Tuition and Fees School of Dental Medicine at UNLV. Is there any discussion? I don't see any discussion. Chief of Staff Nick Lajewski, would you please take a roll call vote?
Regent Brager?
Aye.
Chair Brooks?
Yes.
Regent Brown?
Regent Carvalho? Aye.
Regent Cruz Crawford?
Aye.
Regent Del Carlo?
Aye.
Regent Downs?
Aye.
Regent Goodman?
Yes.
Regent McMichael?
Yes.
Regent Perkins? Regent Tarkanian? Vice Chair Ariscotta?
Yes.
Regent Boylan?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you. We'll now move on to Agenda Item Number Seven. This has to do with the chancellor search. And just so that there's clarification in terms of the motion that would have to be made if a Regent desires to make a motion regarding what this looks like, I'm going to turn this over to Councilman Martinez to explain that language.
Jimmy Martinez, for the record. My recommendation would be, because an ad hoc committee was already created and is looking at the code provisions for the chancellor search, my recommendation would be that it just be stated in any motion that the selection of a search committee, if there's a motion to do the, a search committee and to whether a consultant is used, that the selection of the consultant and anything from here on out of the committee follows the new rules that come back from the ad hoc committee looking at the code revisions. Yeah.
Thank you, Councilman. So that is a lot, but certainly we can maybe summarize that. The motion would be part of the approval of the advice from the ad hoc committee in terms of the search and using a search consultant.
Correct. I think what the motion could simply say is that it would follow the selection process of the search consultant would follow any rules implemented at the, at the recommendation of the ad hoc committee looking at the chancellor search provisions.
Thank you, Councilman Martinez. I have no doubt that we will probably do this two or three more times. What I'd like to do is throw this over to Regent Brager because you are our chair of this ad hoc committee when we're taking a look at the ad hoc committee for policy. Because part of whatever motion the board decides to lay out will be, will have to do with that. I thought I would ask you to weigh in on this first.
Okay. I feel like our meeting that we had earlier today was exceptionally clear and gave direction to staff on that we would have a second meeting and then we would come back to the full board because we want to make sure that the buy-in from all 13 of us is very clear and concise as we move forward in a very transparent process. How about that? Always following the open meeting law.
Is there any other discussion on Agenda Item Number Seven for the chancellor search? This is to take a look at what type of search that the board would like to have, whether it be a national, regional, in-state, or other. And then obviously, whether or not the search committee should be aided by a search consultant. It, while folks are thinking about whether or not they have a question, I'm going to confer with counsel real quick. Thank you for your patience. So there is a, part of this conversation was maybe having this conversation at the same time that the ad hoc policy committee brings their recommendation to the board. And so when that comes to the board, then this conversation could then take place. It just seems to me, as I'm looking at this, recognizing that the ad hoc committee for policy still has to come back, it might make sense to do all this in one meeting. Regent Brager?
Thank you. And I think exactly what this is saying. And what's nice is then the whole board is stating their opinions on national, local, state. And we are having that clear process. So if we were to continue on with this, that's what would happen once the committee came back the second time. And then to the board.
Sure. And so is there, is there, is there an interest, Regent Brager, that you have of making a motion to postpone this agenda item until such date that the ad hoc policy committee? Or?
If we just don't act on it?
We can take no action. Sure. Just to ensure that the board will not be taking action on this, I do have to call to see if there is a motion. And because I don't hear a motion, we can consider this no action is being taken on Agenda Item Number Seven. We'll now move on to Agenda Item Number Eight, which is the Board Officer's Report. And it would have been, I would say it would have been better to provide this chair report at a, at a different time. But nonetheless, this is where we are. This morning should mark the last meeting of 2023 that I will preside over as chair. And as I step away from this position of great responsibility, I'm filled with gratitude, reflection, and excitement to rejoin my colleagues as simply another member of the Board of Regents. I'd like to extend my deepest appreciation to the Regent Board staff. Thank you, Chief of Staff Carrie Nicolajewski, Special Assistant and Coordinators Winter Lipson and Angela Palmer, and Assistant Coordinator Juliana Kennedy. Your commitment, dedication, and relentless support have been the bedrock of accomplishments this year. Your tireless efforts behind the scenes have ensured that the board's process for higher education policy implementation over the past year has been accomplished. And I am grateful for your invaluable contributions. Thank you, Vice Chair Joe Ariscotta, for your collaboration. And our countless telephone calls that often drove our wives crazy while we found humor and cohesiveness in dialogue that always lasted longer than we intended. I absolutely appreciate you and the time you invested as the vice chair. To the members of the system office, your guidance and expertise has been instrumental in navigating the complex landscape of higher education. And I want to extend my appreciation to interim Chancellor Patty Charlton, Crystal Abba, Jimmy Martinez, Linda King, Renee Davis, and others who, whose collaborative spirit and collective determination have been pivotal in driving progress and innovation within the system of higher education. Your hard work sometimes goes unnoticed, but I deeply appreciate it. I also want to express my gratitude to the countless faces within our higher education landscape across the state. The presidents, professors, administrators, students, and every individual who plays a role in shaping the future of our community through education. Your dedication is the driving force behind the success of our students. Additionally, I want to thank former Regents for their support throughout the last year. There are two individuals who deserve recognition because they've been my pillars for this last year. And it was a year marked with countless hours away from my home and family. My wife Heather, who I thank for your unwavering support, understanding, and patience. Your sacrifice did not go unnoticed, and I am grateful for your encouragement and support. And to my son Blake, your understanding of responsibilities placed upon this role and your willingness to share our time with folks you don't know has been a testament of your maturity and unselfishness. Thank you for your understanding. And after today, we'll have a lot more time for football and Fortnite. And I'm looking forward to both. I am immensely grateful for the opportunity to have served in this role. And I do look forward to diving into a pile of unread emails and unfinished small business tasks. Thank you again to everyone who supported me in this role of board chair. And with that, I will turn this over to Vice Chair Ariscotta.
Regent Brooks, while we still have you and fresh off the microphone, I would like to present on behalf of the board, board leadership, the chancellor and chief of staff's, chief of staff's office is presenting to you today an engraved gavel set commemorating your time as Regent, as chair of the Board of Regents. Our friendship only grew throughout this time, the respect we had for each other, and hopefully the board maintained of you and your stark leadership throughout this month, throughout the past year. I say with great admiration, throughout the difficulties, throughout the adversity, the tenacity and preparation in which you displayed throughout this entire 12 months was done with the utmost. was done with the utmost respect from all. So thank you, Chair Brooks. Thank you for your time as chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair Ariscotta. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all very much. I really do appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you. And and with that, we will move into item agenda item number nine, new business.
Chair Brooks?
Yes.
Chair Brooks?
Vice Chair Ariscotta.
I I'm leaving I'm leaving out a few people. And I have to, I have to give credit where credit is due in my life.
Yes.
So thank you for this moment. I I also want to thank, and as you, as I was mentioning about your preparation for each of each meeting, each statement, you did an admirable job in regards to recognizing staff throughout the system. I too want to recognize Winter Lipson, Juliana Kennedy. And I call her my right-hand woman, is Angela Palmer. She is, she's been there through me throughout this whole moment. Chancellor Patty Charlton, Jimmy Martinez, and two individuals that really assisted me throughout this entire process, guided me, gave me tutorials on the Regent Handbook, the P and G manual, assisted me to become a big data geek when it comes to the data dashboard. And that is Carrie Nicolajewski and Crystal Abba, former executive vice chancellor and chief of staff, Crystal Abba. What you all have done and what you have formed me to be is far more inclusive, assertive, tenacious, and a team member. Thank you. Three people that I have to in my heart give strong recognition to is my dear loving wife, Amanda, my son Robbie, and our beautiful baby G. Throughout this past year, they have begrudgingly accepted my missed soccer games while we were doing chancellor search interviews and input on Saturdays, Byron and I's late-night phone calls, and being fully involved and committed to this board. Like Byron, excuse me, like Chair mentioned, like like Chair Brooks mentioned, is that I too look forward to being more participatory, involved, and a greater voice for the productivity and for a compelling reason for the betterment of the system. Because the system is more than just one person, it's greater as a whole. So thank you for this opportunity, and I look forward to your service. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Vice Chair Ariscotta. Regent Goodman?
I just wanted to say on, I can't really speak for the board, but I'm, I don't, I I just wanted to say thank you. I'm sure there's many members of the board who would agree. We appreciate your service, Vice Chair Ariscotta. I know how much time you put into everything, and we're very grateful for your dedication to this board and to the Nevada System of Higher Education.
Thank you. And and with that, we will now move on to item number nine, new business. Are there any suggested items of new business for consideration at a future meeting? Regent Goodman?
I was trying to find out if there's a committee, but but the words at the beginning of public comment did not go unheard. I didn't know if we could create an ad hoc committee on emergency safety or something like that where we could possibly just sit down and meet with faculty and and students and staff and find out where there may be some holes, what we need to do. And and then maybe we put together something, you know, moving forward. I don't want to talk too much, so. But if we could do something like that, I think it would be really helpful.
Sir, Regent McMichael?
Yes, for new business, I would like to propose we request from the legislature additional funding for psychological services. When we have events such as December 6, these funds could be used for acquiring local services since we only have 16 fully funded psychological services personnel that would need to take care of well over 3,000 students and faculty. So if we could somehow ask the legislature for additional funding so these individuals could go local at the prevailing hourly wage to seek these services and when we have events like this.
Regent Boylan?
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate it. I think for my new item, I'd say is we have an AAR, which is an after-action report that you, Chair, I'm sure are very familiar with, about these events that happened at UNLV. And like Regent Goodman said, we should have some sort of a committee that looks into all of this, and we can drill down deeper and see why this happened, what drove this professor to such madness? Was there something in our method of hiring or talking to people who apply for jobs? I think this is something that's really important since we are an open university and we are a public university. All of us should be aware of why we got to this. We can always say it happened and then move on. But we really need to drill down and find out why this happened and what we can do better. Now, one last thing I'd like to say. Chair Brooks and Vice Chair Ariscotta, we've had our differences. I've been a corn on your side. But I really do appreciate all the time that the two of you must have put into this. It's tough to be a leader and lonely at the top. So I thank you guys and welcome back to the rest of us ordinary Regents. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Are there any Regents with new business? We'll now move on to agenda item number 10, which is public comment. Is there any public comment at GBC?
There is public comment at GBC.
Thank you. Dave Sexton, Faculty Senate Chair for GBC. I'm very encouraged. Thank you. It's nice to hear the comments that the Regents just made under new business. That's very encouraging for our concerns. I want to emphasize the statement this morning that was read by the chairs that this is a very unified statement. It's a system-wide statement. It's a system-wide problem. All of the campus, all the chairs are together in on this. We see a problem, and we're asking the Regents to help us find a solution to that problem. We believe that we need to really work on sharing information in a timely manner and keeping the Senate chairs in the loop. Again, system-wide, all of our campuses were talking. I was getting phone calls on my campus from faculty while this was unfolding on the news, while they were watching it on television. And they were calling me, asking, you know, what we should be doing and stuff. So this was, this was absolutely, as it was happening, the chairs were talking among ourselves within the hour and sending emails back and forth within the hour. I know it took three hours for our campus to get out a statement to faculty, and then it took two more hours for the second email to come out. And and we need something a little better than that. And I'm not ranking on our campus. This is not our campus. Every campus has got the exact same story. So if we can work on those two issues, we think that would really help the problem. Thank you.
Is there any other further further comment at GBC?
There is no other comment at GBC.
Thank you very much. Is there any public comment at the system office in Reno?
Kent Irvin, ERBI and Nevada Faculty Alliance. I'd just like to endorse all of the comments of the Faculty Senates and put our support behind all of their comments and proposals for the Nevada Faculty Alliance. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Boog. It's spelled B-O-O-G. And I am the Faculty Senate Chair for SA and SCS. The tragica on UNLV campus has opened several issues with protecting our campuses. We are thankful for the first responders that acted quickly and saved many lives. There are some points of interest that we would like to consider, like you to consider. There's mandatory emergency training on all campuses for everyone. This would include like what to do, where to go, what to expect from first responders, where to get help after an emergency. We would like to have active alerts on all NCHI cell phones. Maybe there's more than one campus involved, like UNLV and DRI, through neighbors. Excuse me. One app for all NCHI, not an app for UNLV, and another one for UNR, et cetera. This app needs to be secure, fast, updated communications and action plans. There are software programs that can monitor issues across the U.S. in real time that may give advanced warning signs. People, police have, I'm sorry, police need to have secure communications with other agencies and campus leaders. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment?
No, there's not.
Thank you, Vice Chair. We'll move to public comments here in Las Vegas.
Patrick Villa, V I L L A, CSN Faculty Senate Chair. As our colleagues have said, you know, we're in joint unified support of our statement we read earlier. And I'm glad to hear a few Regents have already are looking for some sort of a committee or something to task force to do this. So we appreciate that. As Ed had mentioned, we we met and got together. We were talking immediately. We had a meeting ourselves a day after. And it's amazing when we shared what the different colleges have, you know. CSN, for example, we have our little swipes that open and unlock the doors and all that. There's an emergency, I literally would have to open the door, swipe it, and then shut that door. Whereas UNR said they've got this little deadbolt-type thing, and and it'd be nice to coordinate and have something similar. As Ed also also mentioned, the apps are kind of inconsistent. I've I've been on the CSN app forever, and I didn't notice it until someone pointed it out. I didn't get any alerts. And the reason is I didn't opt-in this semester, which I didn't even know. You have to at CSN opt-in every semester to get alerts. It should be a simple fix. You got to opt-out every semester, and you're in by default for these reasons. I do worry that too much information, too many alerts, we're not going to listen to them. You know, I compare it to one of my cars that's a 1990s car, and it still has an old alarm that you all know, the one that nobody listened to back in the the day when they were going off all the time. Too many alerts, too much of this, it it doesn't work, but we need one good alert. You know, we we talked about like a raid siren, which I know is hard to do on campus. But give an example, one that everyone listens to, that we've all heard. It's not going to play, but yeah, you heard it. That one right there. You've all heard your phones do that when we have a flash flood down here in Las Vegas or an Amber Alert. I don't know if that's a Fed thing, but I think it'd be worthwhile if we explore that idea, if we can tap into that just for the first alert. The one that, you know, if everyone's phones are off, 10 people will hear it, and we can act, and we can be checking our phones after that. But I think that's something to start with. Thank you.
Hello again, Molly Apple, NSU Faculty Senate Chair for the record. And just along again with our shared comments, I wanted to highlight some further particularities of what faculty on my campus have been talking about and experiencing. And I do want to take a moment to thank our campus leadership, Dr. Pollard, Vice President Fernandez, Provost Frye, for their openness to making sure that as we process this event, that faculty are are heard and that faculty leadership is engaged in debriefing the successes and pain points of our campus system response to this emergency event. And we recognize some of these points are within our locus of control, but some of them will require your support, coordination, and advocacy. And so, again, thank you for already taking steps for that today. I've definitely been fielding folks' panic, trauma, helping, trying to help them hold sort of the contradictory things at once of needing to seek information while knowing that clarity of substantiated information takes time, often that panic doesn't want to to give us. I'm also grateful that our school has prioritized making sure that there are supports for mental health of our employees and students. A couple of things there that, you know, recognizing Nevada State, you know, we're we're out in the wonderful wilds of outside Boulder City and Old Henderson now. And our, the sort of isolated nature of our campus is double-edged in terms of how people are thinking about this experience. We don't obviously have the kind of leakage, for lack of a better word, that UNLV has integration, we could say, with the communities and that CSN does. But we also still are looking for clear evacuation plans and and practice, practice with those plans, I think. UPD assured us, and I have no reason not to believe them, that they would be on our campus in a matter of minutes. And I think that people are seeking the opportunities. We're we're talking a lot about that. We're working with our leadership, hopefully with UPD's support, to revisit how we plan and implement access to that practice. We're thinking about how our PTIs need to be looped into these trainings and and how we have deaf faculty who rely on the consistent functionality, as what Patrick was saying, of all the ADA components of these alert systems. So I go to saying we're in beginning stages. This is fresh, and and I do have confidence in our leadership, and and we continue to ask for your support and advocacy as as we all take next steps for this. Thank you very much.
Hello, Teresa Marie, M-A-R-I-E. I wasn't quite sure I was going to speak today, but I've been in contact with President Nicole Thomas, and we're both on GPSA with UNLV. And, you know, two weeks ago, we stood before you, and we requested and advocated for COLA increase for our faculty because they are the pinnacle of our education, and they remain that. And our faculty to continue to worry about our students, the first thing they said when I walked in today was, hey, how are you? And I worry about them. I know my colleagues worry about them because they're focused on us and they're focused on the safety of campus. But it was their colleagues that were injured. And many of us who are graduate students are also instructors and in some ways are colleagues as well. So what I ask is that you listen to our faculty because they are our mentors. They are the reason we are here. And these common sense requests are not that hard. I sat in our quad last summer, or last semester with a friend of mine outside of BEH and the Student Union at those tables discussing what we would do when this happens. It is not a case of if, and unfortunately, I was not expecting it to be a semester later and a semester that affected my faculty and my colleagues. So I ask that you listen to them, listen to students, listen to our staff, and ask what we think we need because we're the ones that are living it every day. And I thank you.
SCS, is there any public comment on the phone lines?
Yes, we do have one caller.
Thank you.
Caller with the number ending in 2559. Please press star six to unmute, state and spell your name for the record, and you have two minutes to address the board.
Hello, this is Rochelle Bassen, B-A-S-S-E-N, WNC Faculty Senate Chair. WNC stands for solidarity with UNLV during this horrific tragedy. Faculty Senate Chairs agree that now is the essential time to think about safety at all of our institutions. of our institutions. First, I want to commend our administration for their timely communication sent by email into Canvas for all students and staff about the event that happened at UNLV, and included resources about how to reach out for help. It gives us more confidence and an appropriate response in hopefully a never-future emergency. But after communicating with the other, with, sorry, WNC Faculty Senate, we backed the need to establish diverse and dependable means of communication. For example, we receive automatic text, phone calls, and email alerts simultaneously in any emergency or campus closure alert. However, one point of concern that was brought up is about consistency of door locking mechanisms even across campus buildings. In the terrifying circumstances that you would have to barricade the doors, all doors need to close towards the room and be locked from inside. We also need to have rapid means of communication across buildings such as panic buttons or text and alert systems for employees. And institutions should also be checking whether first aid kits, AE devices, and fire extinguishers are installed across central points in hallways in buildings. So I hope that Facilities and Safety Departments will look at upgrading these basic safety gaps to ensure safety in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe that Regent McMichael, do you have public comment?
Yes, I do. Donald Savante McMichael, Jr., Sr., M-C-M-I-C-H-A-E-L. My public comment is in regards to recognizing those individuals that are always dealing with trauma and unexpected life events, such as the Student Counseling and Psychological Services, known as CAPS, as well as the Student Recreation and Wellness Center. These individuals were on hand and available at the Reunification Center over at the Las Vegas Convention Center. And I would like to also appreciate and recognize Jamie Davidson, Ph.D. He's a licensed psychologist, psychologist for the Student Wellness Unit and Division of Student Affairs, as well as Brad Bradford, Vice President of Customer Safety over at the Las Vegas Convention and Visitors Authority. These individuals, along with other support personnel, we must recognize every time we have such events so that the entire community can help out with any such emergency. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.